It's good.
Welcome to the Florida County Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, June 22, 2023. We completely stand for the invocation by Reverend Todd Allen, the Presbyterian of Beaver County, and remain standing for the flag.
Good morning, everyone. I know our attention, many of us, has been directed toward this submersible in the ocean, such a tiny little bit. We have not been able to find it, but we are never lost in God's sight. God always has a concern for things that are small as well as large. And so, we pray God's blessing upon this meeting. Would you join me in prayer, please? Or God, there's never a moment when we are out of your sight, out of your care, and out of your love. We pray for your guidance during this time together of sharing, of public comment, of doing the business here in this community in which we live and love. We pray you will bless our leaders. Bless the discussion here. In your son's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move to visitors' comments on agenda items. Any visitors like to comment on agenda items? If you could just state your name for the record and...
Tom Damon from Rochester. And I know most of the, he was commissioners personally, Dan Camp, Tony Amadeo, not too much familiar with Jack Manning, but I've heard good things about you. So, or something, sir, you're all good people. Okay, I've come before the commissioners due to the public intent to change the evaluation, the assessment evaluation from fifty percent to one hundred percent. So, that's on the agenda for today for you commissioners to vote on. I would ask you to vote against this or table it because it will be very detrimental to the taxpayers of Beaver County. So, I did put together information and sent each one of you a copy of it from the concerned taxpayers of Beaver County, which I represent as an officer. Did all of you get a copy?
Yes, sir.
No, Jackson. Okay. So, you had a chance to look at it. For the public here today, I have addressed it to Beaver County Commissioners, Dan Camp, Tony Amadeo, Jack Manning. Everybody ready to back? Yes, sir. You notified taxpayers of Beaver County in the Times newspaper of your intent to enact an ordinance at your regular meeting, June 22, at 10:00 a.m. This ordinance proposes to change the fifty percent of value to a whopping one hundred percent of actual value upon all homeowners and property owners in Beaver County. At revenue neutral, no tax increase, the new reassessed county tax will be seven mils from the existing twenty-six mils taxed presently, using fifty percent actual value existing now. But you commissioners now want to change, to increase the actual value to one hundred percent of these property values with your new actual values from reassessment to all county properties, making revenue neutral at three point five mils of county tax, which doubles the value of each mil of tax. Thereby, one mil of tax would take two times the tax money from the struggling taxpayers each and every year. And when only three point five mils are added in increase to the county taxpayers, that would double the existing tax bill to all taxpayers of Beaver County. And that would, revenue neutral, would double your income or your tax money to the county. Right now, it's fifty-seven and a half million, so you just double that. Shame on you for trying to do this upon struggling taxpayers. All the millions of tax dollars taken in this year from the taxpayers would be doubled with only a three point five mil increase if you pass this bankrupting ordinance upon we, the people of Beaver County. And with the Pennsylvania state law maximum cap at twenty-seven mils for the county, that would be bankrupt long before hitting the maximum. That maximum is twenty-seven mils. You're twenty-six now, thirty-one mil ago. If you pass this cruel ordinance, burden upon us taxpayers, homeowners especially, under this ordinance, each homeowner will pay double the tax money for any raise in millage. Even if just one mil of tax is raised, then taxpayers will pay equivalent, two mils worth of money from fifty percent assessed value used as is now. This reassessment will be bad enough upon any struggling homeowner taxpayer, and now you commissioners plan to bankrupt most all taxpayers of Beaver County. And this one hundred percent will affect all towns, school districts in Beaver County the same way upon all taxpayers. We, the concerned taxpayers of Beaver County organization oppose this terrible ordinance intent upon us and hope you reconsider. Now, would that we, the people, know how you intended to destroy Beaver County homeowners with this ordinance? Most sincere, Thomas Damon, on behalf of the concerned taxpayers of Beaver County. Now, that is the letter that I sent you. You had time to look it over. I spoke to some of the, I spoke to one of the commissioners, and I spoke to your secretaries. So, you've had time to peruse it and look it over. So, right now, the assessed value at fifty percent is twenty-two point two billion dollars. That's the assessed value right now at twenty-six mils, one mil from the max. The assessed value at fifty percent will go to seven point eight billion, which will be seven mils. Revenue neutral, no tax increase. Now, we go to the hundred percent. Assessed value at a hundred percent will be fifteen point seven billion at three point five mils. All this is revenue neutral. Twenty-six mils for the county is fifty-seven and a half million dollars. Actually, it's fifty-seven million, five hundred fifty-six thousand, ninety-seven dollars at twenty-seven cents. Now, that's at the fifty percent valuation.
Mr. Damon, we have, first of all, a policy here where you're...
Speak up a little bit. I'm a little hard to hear it.
We have a policy here where you're limited to three minutes in your statements. You've given a statement. I think we understand what you're saying. Thank you.
I'll yield my time. Okay.
You can't yield your time, sir.
Yeah, you can't. You can't yield your time.
Yes, he can. This is we, the people. The First Amendment gives us a right, freedom of speech.
And no one stopped you from giving your statement.
And we also are allowed to go to our commissioners' meeting and voice our opinion and voice what's going to happen to us. Now...
Mr. Damon, you...
Wait a minute. You're a hard hand. You're a hard hand. You're a hard hand.
Excuse me. Out of respect, we let you go.
Mr. President.
Your three minutes were up. If there's someone else who's here today who'd like to speak, they can. We understand your concerns. We'll take into consideration when it's time to vote. This has been going on for seven years now. And now, because the board, at the end of the day, either we do fifty percent, seventy-five percent, a hundred percent, the fact, the lower the number we go, the faster we'll get to another reassessment in the future. Do you understand that? We don't have to raise taxes by the mils or two and a half mils. We could raise them by a smaller percentage. This board does not plan on raising taxes.
Danny, you'll never get to that max. You're one mil away from the max right now by state law. Do you believe in that max? Do you believe in that state law?
We could go above the max, sir, if we petition the court for debt service.
Okay, you can't petition it. You've got to go to court. But the max is twenty-seven. You're one mil away, correct?
It's twenty-five, sir. The max is twenty-five.
The max is twenty-five. So, you're a mil over. Okay. All right. Well, anyways, you're at twenty-six mils. Okay. What you should do is pass an ordinance that you can only raise it one mil. I was told by solicitor it was twenty-seven mils max. So, pardon me. I got wrong information. But anyway, why don't you pass an ordinance that no commissioners can go one mil over ever, if you believe in the state law, of twenty-seven mils or twenty-six mils?
We've raised taxes one time in sixteen years. One time in sixteen years.
How many mils?
Two point five or two point three. In sixteen years.
Okay, sixteen years. Okay, two point five. Well, right here, if you get it to a hundred percent, you only have to go two point five, one more mil. That's three point five, and you'll be taking in an extra fifty-seven and a half million dollars.
And that will never need to be done, sir, because the mil is worth more money now than what it was before.
Right, right.
Exactly.
We understand that.
Yeah. Right. At fifty percent, it's worth more. A hundred percent, it is double that.
Generally speaking, whenever governing bodies go to raise taxes, they're not looking at millage. They're looking at how much money do we need to either offset the deficit or for various projects. So, the millage purposes really isn't what is at the forefront. The forefront is how much money do we need to bring in? And if it's determined that we need to raise a million dollars, all right, well, if we need to raise a million dollars, how much millage do we need to increase it? It might be a half a mil. It might be one mil. But the, whenever you really boil it down to, they're looking at money, not necessarily raising it certain millages. The millages get to the amount of money that they need. And where this is going is that moving forward, the millage that they would have to increase it would be less because, as you're pointing out, the millage is going to bring in more money than what it currently does right now.
They're all going to just say, hey, every town is going to say, hey, we're just going to raise it one mil or like he said, two point five or whatever it is, and we're going to be swamped. We can't pay the taxes now.
We don't have the authority to tell the school districts and municipalities how many mils they could raise.
That's right. We don't.
So, what you're asking us to do today is something we can't.
No. You are putting that hundred percent for every school district and every borough and every town in Beaver County, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, there you have it.
Even if they did fifty percent that you want them to do, you're still at seven mils.
What's that?
And even if they do fifty percent like you want, they're at seven mils. You're concerned the school boards can then still go twenty mils if they want to.
Schools don't have one.
So, they go as much as they want. So, the issue is with the school boards. As this board told you, we are fiscally sound. They have no, they have no intention of ever raising the millage above the three and a half mils because we are bringing in what we need.
Why are everybody, every town in Beaver County here is almost at the max now? Why do you think the legislators put a max on? Because they know that you're going to break the, the town, the people. I mean, look around here in Beaver. This is fine. Every other town, we've got slum landlords buying the property from your...
I don't, but I don't live in Beavers. The taxes are too high.
From your tax sales.
That's what we're complaining about.
From, wait a minute, from your tax sales, from your sheriff's sales, and from your judicial sales. Slum landlords are buying them, and they're bringing in slums.
Mr. Damon, welcome to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. It's municipal control, municipal run. We have no purview of the municipalities nor the school districts.
This, this is going to, you're going, a hundred percent is going to that school district.
And each of those municipalities, each of those school districts, they're going to justify any increases they have on how much money they need and why they're doing it. We have no control over that.
Right. You do not have any control. And guess what? We have little control, but the, the people have very little control. And I come to this meeting here and we try to, on short notice, I don't even know if it's legal. You signed it, that it was documented on June ninth, but it didn't go in the paper under legal notice until the fourteenth, June the fourteenth. So, how much time do we have to digest this and come to the meeting and voice our opinion when you three commissioners already agreed to do this?
Seven years, sir.
Seven days, yeah.
We've been discussing a hundred percent for seven years, since, since this has been from there.
Who knew of it? No, none of it. You didn't put it in the paper until June fourteenth.
And that's by law is when we have to.
Is that the correct timing?
The law, the law requires at least seven days for, at least seven days for an ordinance to be advertised before it's passed.
You just made it. You just made it. Today is the seventh day. You just made it. That's not giving us much time. Over the weekend, too, there weren't even business days. And you say you have no control over the school boards and the towns. We run into the same thing. We take our time off to come here. Some people couldn't get the day off from work, but some did. And you've got older people, some of our members who were trying to come in a wheelchair, but they had to give their medication at ten o'clock. They tried to give it at nine. They didn't make it. Okay, we do our best to come here. You represent us. All three county commissioners represent us. It takes two votes to pass this thing. Could one of you vote no? Could one of you bring it up to table it? I mean, what is the whole purpose of doing it in the first place unless you're trying to give everybody in Beaver County, all the people that run the different towns, all the people running the different school boards, a way to tax the heck out of people because one mil of tax is going to be about seven times, actually, seven point four, seven point four. Well, actually, seven point four three. That's, that's, in other words, instead of, this year, one mil is one mil. Next year, one mil will represent seven point four mils. That's a lot of millage increase. So, the state legislature has a cap. You guys have met it. And now, you can start all over again, and it'll be years before you ever reach that twenty-six mils or twenty-seven, whatever I was told. So, that's all we can do is come to the meeting, voice our opinion, and hope that you would represent the people of Beaver County and not pass this burden. Because I was told, hey, if they're going to raise your taxes in a school district and a town and the, the, the county, of course, you guys are up for election, so you're not residents this year. I've been told, and I've been told that you publicly mentioned that you are not going to raise taxes, Dan Camp. And I understand that the other two have also agreed publicly. Is that correct?
I voted for one tax increase in sixteen years.
No, no. Are you going to raise taxes this year?
There's no reason for us to raise taxes.
And revenue neutral, you're not going to raise taxes, correct? Okay, that's public. How about you, Jack?
I've repeatedly said there is no reason for us to raise taxes. We will not raise taxes.
Okay. How about you, Danny?
Yes, sir. We'll not raise taxes.
Okay. So, all three of you agree that you're not going to raise taxes, revenue neutral for the first year. Okay. Now, if you pass this thing here, like I was told that at least one county commissioner, you can vote them out if they're going to raise taxes. We can vote them out. I like you guys personally, a considering friend of mine. But, and I was also told by the solicitor board, same thing. You can vote them out. And I made notes and so forth when I spoke to you guys. So, if you pass this upon the people of Beaver County, yes, we'll do our darndest. Hate to do it. In the past, we did it. We got rid of three county commissioners, all three. Corack, Ross, and Pettibone. Threw them out. Concerned taxpayers of Beaver County. And we've got two of our guys in, Gerald Wal and, did you forget the other guy's name?
Roger, Roger Javens.
Javens, Roger Javens. Yes, we backed those two guys up. And the county's been going pretty good so far, so we haven't had a whole lot to do. We run local races and so forth. But we will do our best. It only takes zero write-ins for one of you to lose your job. Zero write-ins.
Sir, sir.
Wait a minute. It will take, hold it. Wait, it'll take, wait, I'm telling something that's...
Your time's up, sir.
One minute, wait a minute.
We're moving forward. Is there any other comments on agenda items?
Okay, and we're going to vote you guys out if you pass.
God bless you, sir. Good luck.
God bless you, too.
Thank you.
Now, Damon.
Yes, sir.
Rochester Township. I hope I get to three minutes.
Yes, sir.
Three minutes is ridiculous. I'm on school board. If somebody wants to talk, let them talk. Three minutes. You guys would...
He had thirty.
Just leave twenty-five minutes. Okay. Yeah, I understand. And probably nobody else is going to talk. You just go back to your office. Danny, you said a hundred percent. You've been looking at it for seven years. Hasn't come until Mr. Better dug it up. Now, we all are going to have to suffer for that. Okay? I think, Mr. Manning, you said, we have to justify it. That's exactly what you're going to have to do. You're going to have to look at all the people in Beaver County and justify what you're going to do. What is the assessed valuation that you bring in right now? Do you know, any one of you?
What are assessed values?
Not you. Commissioners, do any one of you?
Yes, we do know. But do you have a comment, Mr. Damon?
Wow.
This is wow.
You know, we didn't pluck that number out of the air. It's based on the math that we've done with the reassessment. Assessed dollars in a county right now is at a certain number. When you do it a hundred percent, and the assessed valuation is set now. And we'll just go to my house. A hundred thousand dollars under fifty percent, two hundred and ten, or two hundred and ten thousand under a hundred percent. You see what happened to the evaluation? Now, you're going revenue neutral. And all these towns and school districts, they'll be right where they're at. When that evaluation goes up on my house, they can all hit it one at a time, and it's all good and well. And I'm not the only one. Everybody. So, your assessed valuation in Beaver County has gone up. Your three point five mils, of course, is down. And you're going to be revenue neutral, no tax increase for that. Thank you for that. Next year, the year after, hey, we need this new thing here. We need a new courthouse. That's happened under the last reassessment. We need a new jail. We need this. We need the county park. We need money. Let's move it up a half a mil. Lot of money. Maybe, let's move it up and leave a little money in the kitty. Let's move it up one mil. Bottom line, there's a lot of projects out there. These are going to, you've got a shell over here for twenty years sucking off the taxpayers because we got a project going over there. And the commissioners, of course, have let them come here for twenty years or so without taxes. So, we don't pay for that. That's another part of it. I would ask you to really think about this table today, have a little discussion about it. Of course, you're going to do what you want to do, but for all the people in Beaver County, I think you ought to reconsider it a little bit. Think about it. Get all the numbers in front of you and knowing exactly what's going on. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Elaine Sarver?
Yes, ma'am.
I live in Rochester, Barrowville. My house was built back in the Civil War period. So, it is not the nicest house in the neighborhood, but we keep it up and we keep it failing, keeps it up. Well, I have had it assessed at fifty thousand, and now it's assessed at a hundred and fifty thousand. Well, my taxes are, because I'm retired, hard on me as it is. And now, I have to think about doubling all of that and being able to pay it on the income that I have, which is very low. I mean, I'm at the poverty. That's what I make. And other people are just the same. In fact, Beaver County has changed so much since I was a little girl. And a lot of the houses are empty in my neighborhood. It's, it's disheartening to see how many houses have a terrible amount of money that they say they're going to be bought for, but they're not worth that. So, people don't buy them, and they stay empty. This assessment, reassessment for my own, is really going to be a hardship, not only on me, but the people like me. I hope that you think about that. Or if you're not the one to do anything about it, of course, your input would push it so that maybe this would be thought about and that won't happen. I'm hoping, and that's why you're in office. You're to speak for me. And I hope you heard what I had to say about it being a hardship because a lot of us feel that way. I thank you for my time.
I have your letter right here, sir. Any other audience participation on comments on agenda items? Any questions? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Our motion to approve the June seventh, two thousand twenty-three work session meeting minutes.
I'll make it.
Second. Any questions? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Our motion to approve the June seventh, two thousand twenty-three work session meeting minutes.
I'll make it.
Second. Any questions? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Move to controller, controller Longo.
I have the bills for your approval and payment.
Make a motion, we've had the bills.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Any old business? Hearing none, new business. Our motion to approve the human resources personnel report attachment A.
I'll make it. Second.
Any questions or discussions? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Our motion to appoint Lisa Lynn Conway, one one nine, Cordis Lane, three oh eight one five zero four two to the redevelopment authority of Beaver County for a three-year term commencing on May thirty, first, two thousand twenty-three, and expiring on May thirty of two thousand twenty-six.
I'll make that motion.
I second it.
Any questions? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Our motion to reappoint Tony Pavolonis, one two one St. Corey Drive, Beaver Falls, P one five zero one, one five zero one zero to the Beaver County Airport Authority for a five-year term commencing on January one, two thousand twenty-three, and expiring December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-seven.
I'll make it. Second.
All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We will move to solicitor.
Before your resolutions, zero six two 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 three dash O one through zero six two 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 three dash three one, they've been reviewed by the law department, recommend their approval at this time.
Making a motion, we pass resolution zero six two 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 three dash one through zero six two 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 three dash three one. I'll second it.
All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Also before you is ordinance number O six two 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 three, which is an ordinance establishing the assessed real property value for all parcels in the county at a value base based upon an established predetermined ratio of one hundred percent of the actual value.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Any questions or discussions? All in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion, ordinance carried. We'll now move to visitor's comments on non-agenda items. Yes, sir. If you just state your name for the record.
My name is Dr. Oliver Law.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm here with the Beaver County Marcellos Awareness Community, Eyes on Shell. Last time we met, we had quite a discussion about the Shell plant, and we presented three things, requests from you gentlemen as far as what we felt. One was the plan, one was the town hall meeting and the like. Also considering about the consent agreement. But one of the, since then, we have met with Potter Township about that since we're being awarded part of that. And then also we've met with the Deputy Secretary of the DEP for Environmental Justice about the handling of the fund. But one of the things you guys definitely mentioned in there that, you know, again, you don't have a lot of say in how all this money's gonna be spent and stuff. But one thing we did hear you say is that you were willing to facilitate whatever you could. And one of the things that we've come across is we would like to monitor the Shell plant, and there's a land.
Thank you, sir.
There is between BASF and Shell is owned by the Beaver County Corporation of Economic Development. So I think you guys have some power to say you're looking with that group. So we would really appreciate anything, like you say, you've said you're willing to help facilitate action that you could have access to that land. What we'd like to do is, we currently, and if you've seen any of the news, we have this PDV three thousand that measures the BSCs down to parts per billion. And if you look, when you look at your picture there, I don't know how much you've looked at the monitors and stuff from Shell, but here's the wastewater, there's also the incinerator stack, there's the two enclosed ground flares, and they have what they call a continuous air monitor at that point that has been measuring very large quantities of BSC that Shell has not been analyzing it because they don't have a trigger point at that point. So we figure it's very important to be able to measure what's being emitted by the plant at that point. And then just to bring that home, here is a picture that was taken several days ago at night and have to pass. That really helps.
Looks like a hole.
That's what we want to monitor. So we, you guys, be able to help us out and give any access to that land.
What's your? Yes, we can look at that. One thing you mentioned about facilitating a meeting, as you were here, many of you were, we had roughly a two-hour meeting here, the concerns of many different individuals from Eyes on Shell. Our office is working with Andy, I actually think this morning they talked to Andy, I'm not sure Andy's last name, to schedule that meeting with the commissioners, Eyes on Shell, representatives and Eric Burr, to discuss, you know, the lifetime monitoring and different options that we could help facilitate. From the DEP side, we still haven't heard anything that I know, but we could definitely have those discussions still. I think we would like to sit down with your group first to see what you guys are looking for. And me.
This is wrong right now.
No, I know, and then take that back to, and have an ask ready, remember, we do need.
This doesn't cost you any money.
Okay.
At least right now, if you find something, we have suggested of putting in some permanent monitoring. It's using part of the C E O A funds. Right now, you're just like being assigned to, like, to do an experiment and see what's out there before we go any further. And we really appreciate any help that you guys can do with facilitating our access to that property.
I don't see any issue with us.
No, we can, there's a fence sign there that the C E O, so we can talk about that. My questions are, who's reading the data, who's analyzing the data, who's responsible for the data? It's the DEP worked out, including with Shell with current monitors, so.
No, no, the monitors that Shell, the cams, was a agreement between EIP, the Environmental Integrity Project, and Clean Year Council.
Right, and Shell.
No, and Shell. But the DEP, they get it, I talked to Mark Burlock, who's the air monitoring manager there. They're, they look at that data, but they, because we had some problems with it, I spoke to this question about not having a trigger point. And he said, well, that's a separate agreement between those two environmental groups and not DEP, so.
Correct.
He doesn't have, so we're trying to resolve this issue by being able to monitor on that land in between BASF and Shell. And the values, we'll share it with the public, we'll share it with the DEP.
My point is the enforcement comes from the DEP.
Enforcement, I write the DEP, you know, observations and complaints all the time.
I'm sure you do.
I see, so. And we have this instrument that's been pralivated and checked. We can have the company we get it from, you know, give you, it's giving life values and stuff. So as far as the data being concerned, I think it's completely, we'd be in the judgment and everything, and we'd make it public to everyone. So how can we move forward with this?
We, our office, we could put you in the right direction of who to contact for that.
Okay.
That would be the property, so. If you could just, I was gonna ask for your name for the record, but it looks like you're gonna give a business card.
If you give it to Nikki over there.
Nikki, right here's our chief clerk, sir.
And the best part's on the back, it's the periodic data. In case you guys want to appear, I'll give you a.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right, so I hope, I rate you here for you guys.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on the agenda?
Dan, can I speak one more time?
Yes.
Elaine Sarver, Rochester, Vermont. This ordinance, just to be clear, at the end of the agendas, the six two 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 three ordinance, you didn't have passed that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So I could state them, correct?
A right, a non-agenda item. The reassessment itself will be tough on the people. Because, you know, we're brought here by the reassessment, went to courts and so forth. I'm not gonna say how it was flat or whatever on the local level, but to hear say, that wasn't, I guess you have to bring it up, challenge it right off the bat locally first. But regards to that, reassessment's here, and we have to see, you know, how it's gonna come out, each individual. So that's gonna be bad enough. I mean, it was last time in the eighties when it was reassessed, it was tough on people. So that ordinance was passed, so unless you guys revoke it, soon as the rest of the people, we're gonna notify them about what you guys did. And unless you revoke it, I don't know, one, two, three, maybe all three of you guys will make it.
Yeah, I don't understand why we have, Elaine, sorry, I'm sorry, again, I don't understand why we have a meeting that asks you guys to look at something that you've already decided on. I mean, it's in the agenda and you're past.
We had a meeting yesterday as well, and we've had meetings prior discussing this.
And where we all.
Our meetings are publicly advertised every, every meeting. Our assessment appeals meeting, our regular meetings, meetings publicly advertised.
I know we went to the reassessment to talk to whoever it was we were supposed to talk to, and their computer was down. So at that time, I, you know, said the same thing that I said to you guys about being a hardship, so.
If all honest, I know you guys are upset today, but we are really on your side. I wanna give you an idea, can I finish, right? Can I just, because I am, I am here for you taxpayers, I mean, I don't, I've been the most about spending money, right? They can be here, I've been here for three years. These guys have been in the black for seven years. That's why we know they will not raise taxes. We are fiscally responsible.
We're in the red.
No, we're not.
The taxpayers are in the red.
But I'm saying these guys are, not the school boards, I mean, but to put new people in, you're gonna be in trouble.
We're here for one of the road commissioners.
Can I just, I just wanna tell you, we are truly on your side. Before we got, before this commissioner board got in here, the commissioners were red every three years and they had to take out, because they were spending above their spending.
We're red.
These guys for seven years have never gone over, they've been in the black, they are fiscally responsible. To put new people in there, you're gonna be back to where you were. These guys truly are on your side, and they are fighting to keep it low. They were forced into the reassessment.
We thought they were on.
They truly are, they truly are on your side. They really are, okay? We really are on your side, that's what I'm telling you.
We thought they were on our side.
They are.
I know Tony personally, I know Danny personally, you know, he was our star quarterback and went to T L. And I would imagine Jack, Manny, all you guys are educated, went through high school, and you all have college degrees. So you know what you're doing, that's all I can say.
They're on your side, they are on your side.
And.
Motion to adjourn.
I've seen where you're coming from. You're all paid.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. I announce it. Courthouse will be closed Tuesday, July fourth, two thousand twenty-three, July, and then follow me on July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, ten a.m. Here to Commissioner's Parliament. Motion to adjourn.
Glad to have the county, they love you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.